Welcome, everybody, to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Ames Community College Board of Trustees. As you can see, we are doing this as a virtual meeting. We practiced a couple of times. We think we've got this down pretty good. So if we have any glitches along the way or have to make any adjustments, please bear with us. I'll ask those trustees, if you want to speak, please turn on your microphone and your video. And when you're through speaking, please turn them back off just to preserve bandwidth, so that everybody's connections are clear. And with that, I will call the meeting to order. We are dispensing with the Pledge of Allegiance today. So the next, the first item on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, this is Ray, and I would so move the agenda be approved.
Thank you, Dr. Peterson.
And I would second the motion.
Thank you, Trustee Wendell. I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, we'll do a roll call vote. Thank you, Carrie.
Trustee Hou.
Yes.
Trustee O'Hara.
Yes.
Trustee Peterson.
Yes.
Trustee Wendell.
Yes.
Chair Oxiger.
Okay, the... If I heard it right, Carrie, I think we've got a unanimous vote, so that motion is approved. Next on the agenda, are there any corrections to the minutes? If there are no corrections to the minutes, the minutes stand approved as presented. For public comment, we'll dispense with public comment via the virtual meeting. We do have a link on the presentation for any of you that might have comments to the board. Please use that, and you can email your comments to the board. Carrie will monitor that email and present any comments to the board as appropriate and as they are received. Thank you. Number five on the agenda, presentations from guests and representatives to the board. We will not have verbal presentations to the board today via the virtual meeting. We will, however, have them in the packet. So if you are interested in, as we all should be, the reports from the Student Government Association, Ames Faculty Association, and the Ames Staff Association, please refer to your packets for that information. Next on the item, on the agenda, rather, are action items. Action item A, Board of Trustees' Policy 12. And, let's see, it was moving on me, Carrie. Board Officer Elections and Responsibilities. We discussed this item at the March 11, 2020 board meeting. I think we were all, if I remember, we were all in agreement for the vast majority of this policy, except for a statement relative to having legal counsel for board members. I know Carrie took the notes on what we all stated at the meeting and presented or incorporated that statement into the policy. And that statement now reads, "Board members have the authority, through the board president, to request legal counsel. The board president and/or the college CEO or president have the authority to access legal counsel." And I'll open this up for discussion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, this is Ray.
Yes.
And the way I see it, and I, you know, only have one computer, so, but I think that is printed in red and underlined is the only addition to this policy. We didn't do anything else, as I recall.
And that's my recollection as well.
Okay. And the policy stands as it always has, or has for a long time, except for the addition of that in red statement.
That's correct, sir.
Okay.
Mark, I see you're up on the screen. Do you have a comment?
I'd like a definition of legal counsel. Does the board have separate legal counsel?
I would, I would assume, I don't want to assume, but legal counsel should be the legal counsel as retained by the college would be my presumption. Dr. B., do you have anything to weigh in on that?
Yes, the board itself, in policy, procedure, statute, or the Constitution of Colorado, does not have separate legal counsel from the college. It has been the practice of Ames in the past to utilize Stowe particularly for board questions, but Stowe and his company and his business are not the sole legal counsel for the board, if you will. There have been times, very, very few, one more recently in the past, where the president and the board had some differences with regard to contract, and then legal counsel stepped in on behalf of the board and the college as a whole. So really, legal counsel represents the college, which would include the board, certainly. And then that president needed to acquire their own personal legal counsel, but there isn't a separate sole legal counsel for the board specifically.
So did I just hear you say that a board member could hire their own, their choice of counsel?
No, what I said was, when the board, and in the past, when the board had a discrepancy with the president on a matter of the president's contract, then legal counsel stepped in to represent the board and the college as a whole, and the president of the college needed to hire their own personal legal counsel to represent them.
Oh, I see.
So there isn't a separate, in policy, procedure, statute, or the Constitution, there is not a separate legal counsel for the Board of Trustees.
They should utilize the...
I think it could.
Just, if you need to speak, if you need to speak, ladies and gentlemen, please put your picture up, activate your video, so I can call on you without, so we don't talk over each other. And Ray, I think, Heidi, just a second, Heidi. Ray, I think you may be having trouble with that, and I didn't heard you trying to weigh in, so please go ahead.
Right, I can't, I don't have a video, so I can see you guys, and I can see the, you know, what we're dealing with, but I, the only way I can do it is on the phone this way, so.
Okay, please go ahead.
And I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, it seems like that this statement says that we of Ames Community College have an attorney, and that attorney is selected, whatever, by the board president and the college. And anything as an individual, I mean, it would seem to me if the president is having some difficulties, then that person is certainly eligible to hire their own attorney. But the Community College of Ames, which includes the board and the president, has one attorney.
And I would concur with that, and that's why I say I hate to assume, but I don't know that I have to. I think that's the way it is. Heidi.
Yes, and maybe I'm being picky with terminology. It says, "The board members have the authority, through the board president, to request legal counsel, and board president and/or college CEO have the authority to access legal counsel." I'm wondering if it should say, "The board members have the authority, through the board president, to access legal counsel" as well. I don't, I don't know if I'm just questioning the verbiage, or if that's just me, if I'm being picky on that.
Okay, say your last statement again, please.
I don't know if we should, if it should state, "Board members have the authority, through the board president, to access legal counsel," and then the other sentence remains the same as well. I don't know if there's any difference to having the board president requesting legal counsel versus having access to legal counsel.
Access.
I almost think access would be better, because to me, the other one, requesting legal counsel, is like, we're in trouble, the board, access to legal counsels if we're seeking legal advice.
And I think that would simplify, just simply say that they have access.
Chair Oxiger, this is...
Dr. B.
Yeah, I'm gonna keep my video off, because I keep getting... We can change it to access, but then I think we're gonna need to add more language, because then that can be interpreted that each individual board member has access to reach out to legal counsel without going through the board president to do that.
Yeah, I see that implication, yeah.
Even though previously in the sentence, we say, "Board members have the authority, through the board president, to access," it still could be interpreted as individual members can have their own access directly to legal counsel. I guess we could say to request access.
I think, I think, yeah.
I might add that, you know, if we had board members in the first sentence have the authority, through the board president, to access legal counsels, but I think solves a real, to some extent, a request is kind of like, you know, and the board president would be aware of it, I think that's the appropriate function of, when there's a question to be asked. And that, you know, it kind of, and again, when Lyle, you and I came on the board, the college had separate legal counsel that would develop policies and procedures for us, and some of those, we queried, well, who wrote this? Well, it was the colleges that turned in the vote, and then we went back and would ask, well, that's, he's not the board's attorney. Should we have the board's attorney review this? And that was one of my queries on legal counsel definitions. Does the board have separate legal counsel? Especially given Dr. B.'s inference with a previous situation where it became a concern on president's employment and the contract, where the exact legal counsel had to get hired, you know, by the president, past president, to have the definition given to the contract that was written by the college, by the boards, I believe the boards' legal counsel at that time slash college counsel, you know, and we, you know, we're kind of splitting hairs on what is legal counsel. And I, I just would like to have some definition of Stowe's role. And in the future, when we negotiate contracts, do we have conflict that probably became apparent with the previous situation that needed some appropriate resolution? And, you know, that's, that's kind of a, you know, would you hire, would I, it's kind of a little bit of a chicken and egg, whose counsel's whose, and what purpose? Dr. B. and I have had discussions on this regarding, you know, history and needing to understand the process that occurred, because Stowe's is voluminous in information that he lends to the college boards over the last 50-plus years, and certainly has been available to the presidents, I'm sure, at that time, and in a reasonable fashion, you know, and fashioned that way. So I, you know, and I'm not trying to mince words, I just think we need to have some sort of, not so much a line drawn in the sand, but some sort of definition on legal counsel, and what's appropriate legal counsel. Obviously, if it's college manner or lawsuit manners matters, we need to be, we need to have all hands on deck, you know, regarding that. If it's, if it's the relationship between a board and the president, then that's, you know, there's gotta be a division of jurisdiction state, and I'm gonna use prayer phrase, that terminology. And can one be the other? Can Stowe be the same in one, an advocate for Dr. B.'s needs, and as well as a contract negotiator at that point in time? And maybe I'm getting too far into the weeds with that, but when you bring up legal counsel, and we never had this problem before, because we'd ever worried about it, it surfaces. And, you know, having access is important for any board member, reasonable access. Through the board president, I, you know, I participated in two events such as that, and it was perfect, both with Ray and you, Lyle. So I, I think there always needs to be two board members present whenever we do pop to our attorney. And that would be, that would be prudent, just in case one hears something different than the other, and then there could be conversation that would be not necessarily partisan. I'm using that not so much in a political sense, but in a, you know, you hear both sides, you hear a whole statement being made.
No.
Again, it's, it's just fine lines, and, you know, we operated for 50-plus years without any definitions on legal counsel. And I see, I see the need, and I just would like to make sure we're clarifying that for all concerned, that we have appropriate areas to consult legal counsel, both the boards, be it the boards and the colleges' counsel, for appropriate questions, but not every question in order, every...
Well, Trustee Hou, I, I mean, you said getting into the weeds. I think, I think you're, you're trying to define a whole ton of scenarios that could come up. I think having access to legal counsel, depending on the situation, legal counsel has the ability and the responsibility to help define that information, and whether other people need to be present or whatever. So I think we need to keep it a little broader than what you're presenting. Certainly, certainly your statements are taken seriously and have validity, but I think those could be addressed at the time of the need, rather than try to define all of those scenarios through policy. Dr. Jean, go ahead.
I like the wording that says that board members will have access to legal counsel through the president of the board. I just wanted to clarify that. But also, in talking about definitions, who is Stowe accountable to today? The CEO of the college or the president of the board?
I can't answer that. Dr. B., do you have any information on that? Who does he actually, who is he hired by?
Sorry, I couldn't unmute. So, so I think maybe the best way to look at this is that the board and the college are not separate in this. The college legal issues and the board legal issues aren't always the same, but it's, it's a holistic or systematic approach. So the college pays Stowe's bills and is hired by the college and has responsibility to support the board, as does, and let me just, since my microphone happens to be working, let me just take a minute to clarify, the college in the past, which includes the board, so let's talk about the college as an institution, so, or maybe I'll stop saying the college, Ames, in the past, has chosen to have in-house legal counsel, which about five years ago, four and a half years ago, our in-house legal counsel chose to go venture forth and start their own business. And Ames chose not to hire in-house counsel again at that time. So over the last five years, four and a half years, Ames has a variety of legal counsel, not just one. So Stowe and his company is one. We also have Sandra Owens, who's excellent at contract law. We also have, gosh, I'm not gonna remember all their names, but we have a local company that's excellent in employee, player relations and employee contracts and those kinds of legal issues. We have another company that we use that's focused on Title IX and student rights issues. Hiring has gotten so complex, and our compliance and accountability has become so detailed that having one or two general counsel firms really doesn't help support our needs. So we've gone to that model. All of those legal counsel entities are paid through the institution, by the institution's operational funds, and all of those legal counsel firms, if the board needs education, information, if there's an issue, all of those have access to the board, and the board have access to all of those. Stowe and his team happen to be one of that handful. Hopefully, that helps to clarify a bit.
So basically, I think kind of what we said before is the situation would dictate, possibly, who that attorney might be. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. So a quick example would be, if there was a Title IX issue that the board had to deal with, we would call in that legal firm that we currently use for Title IX to work with the board on that Title IX issue. We would not probably call in Stowe, that's not his area of expertise on that topic. That wouldn't be in the best interest of the board, or the college, or the issue. So we would pull in that person. The board obviously has access to that legal counsel for that purpose.
Dr. B., or in just the group here, would it be fair to consider that for the majority of Stowe's work with the college, it's been directly to the board or as a historian for the college?
Stowe actually started with the college at the college's inception, so he helped establish Ames and has, has been part of, you know, his office has been part of the college for over 50 years. So yes, his, you know, he has, his firm holds some of that history, as does Ames as an institution, and our records. And so, yes, he's very helpful in trying to, you know, remember things and pull history up and so forth. So that doesn't certainly negate using him, nor does it mean, his firm are expert on everything we need at this time.
But in respect to his basic legal advice, it's more directed at the board and/or in historic fashion, am I correct with that?
I guess I wouldn't say that, Mark, I'm not, and I'm not really sure I'm understanding what you're saying, but, no, I wouldn't say that.
Well, you know, I, I'm just, I'm just making sure that, my only inference with Stowe has been on working with board members. You know, we were enriched by his presence at our whole retreat, the whole day this past January. And any other occurrence, it's always, I've never seen Stowe show up unless it's been at a board meeting, unless he comes to the college one-on-one with you directly from time to time. I just, I don't get to see Stowe other than in a board environment, so I'm kind of, that's my query.
Can I, can I make a, just a thought process? On the items that we're trying to have revised, maybe we need to say that we have a request to Ames Community Colleges' legal counsels.
Just make it plural.
Plural, and maybe identify that it's Ames Community Colleges' legal counsel versus just legal counsel, then it clarifies that we're going through the legal counsels, whichever one that is appropriate at that time, if we ever had to do that.
I can see that, you know, but what if there's an occasion where you have to bring in a specialist or something like that, then you, then you limit it.
That's true.
I, you know, I think we're making this way, way too difficult. I think we need, I think we need to keep it broad. This is a policy, and I think we need to have access to legal counsel as, as the situation demands, and that could mean any of our counsels or anyone else, or a combination of counsels. You know, I, I can't imagine, like I said before, thinking of every scenario that might present itself. So again, I think we need to keep this very broad, and just simply say that we have access to legal counsel, and let the situation define what that legal counsel is. Otherwise, we limit ourselves. This way, it's wide open, we get the counsel we need.
Lyle, I would, I would agree with you, and maybe we are just trying to funnel it to, you know, to make it so narrow. And generally, what is written there should, should be professionally accepted by everyone. I think it would be fine.
What if at the end of that, access legal counsel as required?
It don't really see how that simple, or, well, that may address, you know, which legal counsel we might want to access. But I guess it's my impression that legal counsel for operational contracts and HR issues and computer issues are really not the board's interest. Those are operational issues. I think it's more, as Mark said, related to historical reference and the interface between the board and the CEO. And I think needing, well, I think if we define some accounting or accountability for Stowe, that might address it. And it, obviously, it's pretty confusing to all of us who Stowe is accountable to, and that should be cleared up.
I think we leave Stowe out of it. I mean, Stowe's not gonna be around forever, and this policy is gonna be around for a long time. So again, I think if we just leave it at legal counsel, we cover that.
I guess I have a question, since, you know, there's only two sentences in this statement that we, we have, we just brought an attorney into this, into this statement. And the college has operated and the board for 50-plus years, under the assumption that we all always had access... that we all always had access to legal counsel, was never something that was strictly foreboding. And there could be a question, a valid question on why we even have that statement being entered into this, this document. Is there a rationale for it since it's?
Well, I think it's been practice and that board members have accessed legal counsel. And I think we're just validating that, we're making that correct.
Chair Oxer.
Dr. B.
I don't know if you can hear me. Let me turn on.
Yes.
Yeah, I can.
That statement in red is in there because this was the discussion last month that some of you felt comfortable wanting to clarify. So that's why the statement is being put in. And based on some of those comments that y'all just made, let me read something that may feel more comfortable for you. Board members have access, comma, through the board president, comma, to request legal counsel parentheses S and a parentheses, so as the situation requires. That therefore brings in, it takes out the word, well, it puts that word access in, it pluralizes councils and it situationalizes the need regardless of who it is. So maybe that helps to broaden that statement a bit. But Mark, to your point, the reason we're talking about this is, that was something that was requested last month to add.
That's correct. All right. Gene, I think you were up first, then Heidi.
And I would like to comment because I think I'm the individual that prompted this whole discussion resulting from a call I placed to Stowe when two members of the board were encountering some conflict on being president of the board. And my contact to Stowe really wasn't a legal question. It was to get a historical perspective on how it was decided that the president of the board would be a two-year term versus a one-year. And my thought, my reason for calling him is, well, was a one-year term a middle ground that both board members could agree to so that we didn't have a, you know, a big blow up at the board level on who's going to be chair? So it was, I knew that Stowe was the only one that would probably have any knowledge of how it was determined that it would be a two-year term. And, you know, I apologize if it's created all this discussion and the need for a whole new policy. But yeah, so anyway, I apologize for that. But I do think as a board member coming onto the board and having listened to the community and some board, previous board members about the conflicts with the contract for the previous CEO, yes, I do think it's important that all board members are able to access legal counsel through the board president. Sure, you can't have all the board members contacting legal counsel just independently. But to request access, I think is too, it's not specific enough. I, I think board members can have access through the board president. Would make me feel much more comfortable. I don't want to be encountering the same kind of conflict that the community felt if some kind of issue comes up in the future between the, the board and the CEO. I don't see anything, I'm not aware and I don't feel that there's any conflict there now. I'm very pleased with the CEO's performance and the college's operation. But I, I do think you, you develop policies for all the future contingencies.
Heidi.
Hi, Lyle. I would agree with Gene and Dr. B. I really liked what you quickly penciled in. I think that's reasonable and I would agree to that. And that's, I think that takes, yeah, go ahead.
Dr. B, I would be fine with that, that revision.
That's fine with me as well.
Could you read again what you would be penciling in?
Dr. B, can you hear us?
I'm sorry, it's, my connection's pretty bad, so it's taking me a while to.
Okay.
But let me read what I've got here. Board members have access, comma, through the board president, comma, to request legal counsel parentheses S and a parentheses, as the situation requires, period.
Any other questions?
I have another comment there. Board members have access through the board president to request, well, having access to request, we have that now. We can request that or the board president. I don't, I don't feel as comfortable with that level of access to request. That request can be denied in, as a board member representing a constituency in the community. We, we may not be able to get clarification on issues or, I, I would feel more comfortable leaving out the words to request.
All right. So here's, here's another version. So we need to reconstruct the sentence a bit for proper English, and I know Allison is listening, so this is for her. Board members have access to legal counsel parentheses S and a parentheses, as the situation requires, comma, through the board president, period.
I like that.
Can you read that one more time?
I feel better with that also.
Go ahead, Mark.
Can you read that one more time?
Yes. Board members have access to legal counsel parentheses S and a parentheses, as the situation requires, comma, through the board president.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Hey, any other questions?
Ray, again, Lyle, I, I just have one comment and I, I like the statement, Dr. B, I, I certainly do, but I, when it says board members have, it seems like that could suggest that each one of us equally has access through, through the board president to legal counsel or what we're, what I think we're saying is that it's the board. I mean, it's not individual members, but it's the board, which of course has members that can request it. Oh, I lose everybody?
No, we're thinking.
Oh, okay.
And Ray, that would be something different. So.
Sure would be.
We either say the board of trustees has access to legal counsel, or we say board members has access. And that does, you are correct, it, it takes us down two different paths.
Yes, it does. And I, and I don't want to deny a board member's issue or having, being able to request through the president, but that, but the end result is then the board is who's requesting it. Does that make any sense?
Well, Ray, are you saying that you do not want individual board members to have access to legal counsel?
Yes, I guess I would say that. I mean, I would assume that a board member would say, hey, president, we need to have legal counsel on this issue.
Right.
And it's not just, not just the individual.
I, I think Ray is, Ray is correct in his statement because the board is acting as board, a group, we're not acting as individuals. And so I think Ray is suggesting that if there is a problem, one member sees it, they would definitely come to the, the president, the board presidents and suggest that we need some legal counsel and then it would be, we would be going as a board, a group, I would assume to, or you would, the president. Right?
Mark.
I might, I might feel a little different about that. I, I think, because I've had this experience where I've had, you know, two meetings with not only the, not only Stowe, but the president, board president, and I think they were very productive. And they were situational, not necessarily a, a full gamut of board panacea. Another example possibly would be if we had an ethics issue where we wanted to do it simply for, for all concern. And I think within our ethics policy, the board president has the prerogative to kind of maneuver most efficiently for the best, best outcome. So having the option, I think, gives each individual, not so much a power, but just a fairness for all concern in their timely, in timeliness and how much do we need to exacerbate one situation or the other. And we've already done that here, you know, just with one mere, mere question or two. But I think if the college, the board president's aware of it and doesn't stymie that, that request in any format, and I don't, I think the last wording gives that, gives that access to any board member. And we don't want to take advantage of that as individuals. But I just feel that having the whole board entertain it, it'd have to be a whole board issue per se. And sometimes it could be simple, not between three people, and not be a, a legal meeting per se.
All right. Thank you, Mark. You know, playing devil's advocate to that and considering what Heidi and Ray have said, we are to act as a board and not as individuals. We have no authority as individuals. So I think Ray and Heidi both make a good point is if we have a question, perhaps maybe we should be going as a board, settling things as a board, coming up with a concern as a board. And then if we can't settle it within a board, then we seek legal counsel possibly. Again, playing devil's advocate, Mark. The, the thought being that in order to make board decisions, we all need to have the same Gene.
Well, a question there, when you say, and I understand, yes, we want to act as a board. Sometimes there's a need for information as a, an individual board member or whatever. And you don't always, you know, interact with legal counsel to, to make a board decision. I, I too have been on boards where there have been conflicts within the board and with administration. And if that, that policy were in place, we wouldn't have gotten anywhere toward resolution of those conflicts. I, I think it's just very valuable for, you know, with the board president and another board member and if, you know, other board members, in addition to those two, want to join in the conversation, fine. But it's everything, you know, whether it's policies, its procedures, its regulations and so forth, are so subject to interpretation, legal interpretation, that, you know, in, in my experience, you need to be able to just have a brief conversation, get clarity on some language or whatever. It's not always to make a board decision.
Okay, Gene, thank you for that. Well, we've got a couple of, we've, we've got some differences of opinion. I think what we need to do, we've had a lot of input here, is entertain a motion. We've got a new statement that Dr. B has come up with that seemed pretty amenable to everybody. I think we need to take that, since that's what we have to work with, entertain a motion to that effect and it passes or fails. If it fails, then we put this on the table for further consideration and come back at another meeting. But I think, or we come up with a different statement and vote on, and have a vote on that one, but I think we need to move forward here.
You know, Mr. Chairman, at the risk of opening up another can of worms, you suppose we would have, ought to have legal counsel take a look at this and say, you know, yeah, this is what you need to do or, or not, or?
That's a thought. Heidi.
Well, I was, I wasn't thinking on the same lines as Ray, but that kind of makes sense is I, I really like what Dr. B said, but in, upon review of, of what Ray just said, maybe we should have legal counsel, just look at it, make sure that it applies appropriately.
No, that's a, that's a thought. You know, this, this isn't for us necessarily. This is a policy that's going to apply not only to us.
Forever.
But, you know, for quite ways down the road, at least, certainly applied to different boards as well as us. So that's, we have to consider that. And so if we just start talking about us specifically, I think we get a little bit off track and out of the intent of a policy. So in any case, I would, Mark, Mark, did you have a comment?
Um, you know, and again, I kind of, whenever you bring up legal counsel or, or things like that, without legal counsel, as far as giving us an opinion of what we're trying to write into our policies and procedure, I would be willing to, to hold on this decision until we have a better, better gravity to, you know, we have two sentences that are basically, kind of, you know, we run around the circle with them. And I think it'd be best for us to do this right once instead of, anything would be split or not comfortable in our terms. I think we're close, but we just need to have some affirmations.
Okay.
I would.
I would entertain a motion.
I would.
Go ahead.
To table.
Go ahead, Mark.
This action item until we've had time to reach, reach legal counsel or get another opinion on what we're trying to do, say, that we all agree on that's fair to all concern.
We have a motion to set this item aside pending consultation with legal counsel. Is that a fair assessment of your motion?
Fair enough.
Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Okay.
Okay, now discussion, Ray.
I just, I guess maybe we ought to add to that motion as to whom is going to contact as, do we leave Dr. B to this or, or Mr. Chairman, are you going to do it or where are we on, on that?
No, I, I would assume, and I'll let Dr. Bornstein weigh in on this, but I would assume we would set a work session for this.
Yes, okay. With an attorney possibly.
I, I would think so. Dr. B?
Okay.
Uh, that, that's certainly fine. We can take that route. Also in the past, what has occurred when we've had questions on certain sentences like this is. Um, also in the past, what, um, has occurred when we've had questions on certain sentences like this is that Carrie reaches out. Typically it has been to Stowe. Sometimes it's been to others depending upon the content and had, um, the legal counsel eyeball it, make recommendations and then, you know, we would shore it up and bring it back. So whatever you prefer, if you want a work session on it, that's fine.
I would prefer a work session on this, please, uh, so we can have open discussion on it, make a decision and move on. We have a motion.
I would agree.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. It's been seconded, Ray.
And, yes, okay, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, let's have a roll call vote, please, Carrie.
Trustee Howe.
Aye.
Trustee O'Hara.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Wendell.
Aye.
Chair Oxiger.
Aye. A, motion carries. We will set this item aside for the current, for further consideration, uh, to be discussed, uh, in all likelihood in a work session. Okay, next.
And well, could I just, another comment, I'll go on it. I'm doing all the talking here. But I think we should encourage, uh, Dr. B to, you know, uh, reach out to maybe other institutions. And like she said, that that would be the normal process on something like this. And we certainly ought to encourage that and then, you know, bring in legal counsel or, or whatever, but, uh, uh, not forsake other ideas that might be appropriate, uh, from other institutions.
And I would agree in that sort of, that's the, I would agree, that's the advantage of a work session. Uh, we have a, uh,
Right.
a process for work sessions, uh, research and everything. And so we would get that information. Thank you for that comment. Moving on, action item B, compensation proposal. D, you are up, ma'am.
Good afternoon, trustees.
Good afternoon.
Uh, I'm here to present, uh, action item number, uh, six B, uh, which is the compensation proposal for fiscal year 2021. And just a brief summary of the issue, in 2006, Board of Trustees minutes indicate support to reach the 75th percentile of Mountain State survey for full-time faculty pay. This goal was met and has been maintained for fiscal year 1920. Per strategic plan, strategy to objective 2.3, line 46, compensation, market and benefits package review adjustments were made this year to the staff pay matrix and administrator pay benchmark to reestablish internal equity, address internal compression, realign base pay with market and address minimum wage projections. The administrative recommendation is to maintain the faculty, staff and administrator percentile, matrix and benchmark structures respectively. With the request for a 2% base matrix adjustment, this recommendation would impact pay for all current employees employed prior to March 1st. This would impact all of our full, full-time positions and our part-time positions, including student employees. The administrative recommendation also includes an annual pay adjustment of 1.2%. The annual adjustment will maintain the internal equity and compression adjustments made this year as this relates to new hires after July 1. The fiscal impact for the 2% adjustment is 541,000. The fiscal impact for the 1.2% adjustment is 324,000 for a total of 865,000. Therefore, the administrative recommendation is a motion to approve 2% base matrix adjustment and a 1.2% annual pay adjustment. Thank you.
Thank you, D. Any discussion, any questions?
Mr. Chairman, as I was reading this, and I, I would certainly move that we approve item, whatever it is, I can't see it on my screen.
Yeah, it's six B.
Yeah, okay, six B. But, you know, why, um, why 75 percentile? I mean, I know we set that, but why not 80? B?
We, that's, that's. Sure, I understand the question and, and, you know, that is certainly something that, yeah, we can look at, uh, down the road. Uh, but this, uh, this was just, uh, the goal that was established, uh, uh, under prior, uh, uh, board support.
Board, yeah, right, so. But there's no real justification for it or reason for it, other than that's what the board wants to do.
I think you were board chair when you did that, sir.
Come on now. Not my fault.
Just kidding.
No, I, I, I'm, let's, let's get on with it because I'm certainly ready to vote on this proposal. But that thought just hit me the other day when I was going through it. So, anyway.
Well, thanks.
So I moved it, we would approve it. I don't think there's a second, is there?
No. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mark?
I will, I will second that. Mark will.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, uh, Carrie, can you scroll down a little bit? Item six, I'll just leave it at item 6B, there it is. To approve the 2% base matrix adjustment and a 1.2% annual pay adjustment. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Carrie, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Trustee Howe.
Yes.
Trustee O'Hara.
Yes.
Trustee Peterson.
Yes.
Trustee Wendell.
Yes.
Chair Oxiger.
Yes. So that motion carries. Moving on, item 6C, health and dental insurance benefits fiscal year 2020 through 21. D, you're back up.
Thank you. Um, Ames participates in a comprehensive health and benefits plan for our, uh, basic health benefits, uh, which is developed and managed by the State Board of Community Colleges and occupational education. Ames is a member of the benefits advisory committee, which meets monthly to review claims, experience, adjust plan coverages, annual, annually receive provider service and rate proposals and, and take action on how earnings of the SBCCOE benefits trust established in 1983 be applied to buy down future premium costs for the participating colleges and their employees. Currently, we have benefits include plan options provided by Anthem and Kaiser, uh, dental benefits provided by Delta Dental. And this year, plan changes will include adding a deductible to the Anthem HMO and Kaiser HMO. Uh, it was decided to go with the, uh, $250 annual deductible. And we'll have a few other, uh, minor adjustments to these plans. This increase, uh, these plan changes will result in an increase for Anthem at 10.6% and Kaiser at 3.3%. Currently, Ames provides 100% coverage for employees only tier and 85% coverage for the two tiers of plus children and plus spouse. Last year, you graciously approved coverage for the plus family tier, 86% for the current year, with the intent to face coverage back to 85% for 2021. Open enrollment for employees begins in April, therefore approval of comprehensive health and benefit plan payments is timely. The fiscal impact is $560,000. Therefore, the administrative recommendation is a motion to maintain coverage for employee, employee only tier at 100% and coverage for plus children, plus spouse tiers at 85% and change the coverage for plus family tier to 85% for fiscal year 2021.
Okay, thank you, D. Uh, discussion, comments, questions?
Appreciate.
Anyone?
Chair D.
Mark?
Yeah, I think you did a great job. It's, you're always an, an influence for me personally to help ours, help my staff with, with additional pay raises and certain benefits. And to see what you do here is exemplary and, uh, appreciate your efforts. I would make a motion, if you're ready, Chair.
Yes, sir.
To accept this as written.
Okay, we have a motion.
And I would second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve item.
Yes.
6C.
6C.
Uh, for, for coverage for employee only tier, uh, 100% coverage for plus children and plus spouse at 85% and then change the coverage for plus family tier to 85 for fiscal year 2021. Um, any further discussion? Um, myself, I would just say that I, I think this is a tremendous benefit and, uh, uh, I'm very pleased that we're able, uh, to offer this, uh, to, uh, our employees. Certainly well deserved. And, uh, I will be supporting this. Any other comments?
I would just like to say that I think it's, um, definitely well deserved and I think it keeps us, um, um, I forgot what I was going to say. I'm doing too many things. Keeps us out there as far as, um, trying to maintain and retain, um, employees. Um, I, I think that's our, our, uh, main goal, I would think for Ames is to try to continue to retain the employees that we have and also to try to lure, lure, um, other ones coming to Ames Community College, whether it's in Greeley and Fort Lepton or Windsor, et cetera. So hats off to you, D, for doing such a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great comment.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Ray.
I, I would just add to, uh, trustee Wendell's, uh, comments. And I certainly agree with 100% and the other reason we need to do this is keep people, keep our employees happy and make sure that we have the best that we can get. And, and the way we do that is to pay for them, so.
Very good. And, and one more comment on my part, based on your comments, uh, you know, healthcare has become so incredibly, uh, expensive and insurance has.
Expensive.
And that's one of the primary things that people, especially people and family are looking for when, uh, when they're looking for unemployment and, uh, and offering their services. So, um, again, uh, great job, D. Any other discussions, comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Carrie, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Howe.
Aye.
Trustee O'Hara.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Wendell.
Aye.
Chair Oxiger.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Great job, everybody. Thank you. Moving on, action item 6D, distinguished fellow award. Trustee O'Hare, you're on deck, sir.
Okay. Well, uh, quite a number of years ago, Ames established the distinguished fellow award to recognize individuals in the community, the campus, the region even, uh, who have really gone above and beyond to advance the goals and purpose of Ames. Uh, and so each year, uh, we seek nominations for individuals that meet the criteria that you see listed there A through F. And, uh, those nominations come into the distinguished fellow award committee, which I, uh, uh, had the honor of chairing and representing the Board of Trustees. And on this committee, we have representation from students, staff, faculty, the, uh, executive cabinet and the board. So it's a diverse, uh, committee. And, uh, we had two very strong nominations, I think, uh, people very deserving. At the meeting, we had a lengthy discussion of the merits of each of the nominees. And, uh, it is my, uh, pleasure to report, uh, to you today that the committee unanimously recommends to the Board of Trustees, Jack Ritzloff as the recipient of the 2020 distinguished fellow award. Let me just tell you a little bit about, uh, Mr. Ritzloff. Uh, he is the regional director, uh, of medical imaging for the University of Colorado Health and has been involved in our Ames radiography program advisory committee for many years and is, uh, well-known to the students, well-known and respected. And I think to, uh, all the other advisory board members, uh, he's very deserving. And, uh, that's our recommendation that I would, uh, put forth as a motion for your approval. Any questions or comments?
Well, just, uh, um, trustee O'Hara, I just, just, uh, for the heck of it, is it really Mr. Ratzloff? It's not a doctor, Ratzloff?
No, he is not a doctor. He's a.
He's not a doctor, okay.
Manager, director of the radiology department, imaging department, really is what it's called now.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I, I was just curious. I think it's an excellent nomination. I certainly will support it.
All righty, well, thank you for that, Ray. And, uh, uh, trustee O'Hare, I would take that as a motion? Okay, uh, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I would second it.
We have a motion and a second to, um, recommend approval of Jack Ritzloff as the recipient of the 2020 distinguished fellow award. Any other comments? I would just say, um, uh, I've been involved in this as well and it is, uh, it's a real honor to receive this award. There are typically, um, incredible, uh, nominees presented for this award. It's a, uh, it's a really intense, actually I thought, uh, process of selecting, uh, the person. There's, uh, many other distinguished people on these committees that, that make this decision and make these recommendations. So it's indeed an honor. Uh, so, um, with that, if there's no other comments or discussion, I would, uh, enter, I would, uh, call the vote, uh, since we have a motion and a second. And, uh, Carrie, if, again, if you would take a roll call vote.
Trustee Howe. Trustee Howe. Trustee Howe, could you mute your?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Trustee O'Hara.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Wendell.
Aye.
Chair Oxiger.
Aye.
Thank you.
And that motion carries. So Mr. Ritzloff will be our, um, recipient of the distinguished fellow award. And, uh, trustee O'Hare, I want to thank you very, very much for chairing this committee. I appreciate it very much and I know it was an honor for you.
I would like to just, uh, thank the other committee members. It was a good discussion and, uh, I, I think that, you know, uh, it was a thorough, uh, discussion with good input from a diverse committee, so. We're agreed. Please put that nomination forward.
And thank you for that. Moving on, item 6E. And thank you for that. Moving on, item 6E. Who is Dr. Rothammer?
Good afternoon Chair Oxiger, members
Good afternoon.
Members of the board and Dr. Bornstein, thank you very much for the opportunity to present this action item to you for Ames's first Bachelor of Applied Science degree. If you recall last month's work session, Dean Abernathy and his team did a fairly comprehensive update and review for you on the 120 credit hour public safety bachelor's degree that's looking at, again, doing our first AAS. And it basically opens pathways for furthering student success. We partnered across Northern Colorado, especially with our four-year partner here in Greeley UNC. We have gotten their enthusiastic support and also endorsed by law enforcement firefighting in EMS agencies across Northern Colorado. And as always, trying to be fiscally responsible. And this will be completely on-the-line format, which will offer increased agility and flexibility for students and also for our ability to deliver this education. And it enables upward mobility for Ames graduates and also our public safety professionals who are already working in the industry. So it is my recommendation that the board provide its approval for us to move forward with continued work on the Bachelor of Applied Science degree to begin in fall of 2021.
Very good. Thank you sir. Any comments, any questions?
Hi Chair, I would just like to motion that we approve 6E. I am so excited this was on the agenda today. I knew it would be. But I am just, I'm just elated that you folks have figured out how to put this science, applied science degree together. And I think it's a great asset to Ames. And what a great way to market again to everyone out there that this is such a great institution. So I appreciate that, Dr. Rothammer.
Thank you.
Thank you for that trustee Windell. Any other comments or questions?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I would move to approve item V5, no 6E.
Okay, I think we have a motion already Ray.
Bachelor of Science degree. Oh, we do? Okay, I'm sorry.
Nope, we'll take that as a second.
Okay.
If you're, if you're okay with that.
Yep.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. I'd just like to say one thing. Hey, you know, I grew up in, sort of, spent most of my adult life in this arena. And over the course of all those years, I can't tell you how many people talked about, gosh, I wish we could get a degree in this line of work. Well, it's here. And so I'm incredibly excited about this. Certainly appreciate all the work went into it and developing it and bringing this forth. I think it's a great opportunity for Ames. I think it's a great opportunity for students and everybody working in the public safety arena. So I'm very, very excited and I'm very much in approval of this item. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Rothammer. Coming back into this program with your associate's degree and Bachelor's program. Just an added value to the management potential and the skills that go up that chain of command in those latter. It gives them an opportunity to kind of proceed further.
Very good.
And share their experiences too, which is good even.
Thank you for that Mark. Any other questions, comments? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Carrie, would you take a roll call vote please?
Yes. Trustee Howt.
Aye.
Trustee O'Hara.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Windell.
Aye.
Chair Oxiger.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very, very much. Moving on, action item 6F, Early Childhood Education Entry Certificate. Dr. Rothammer, please.
Thank you again Chair Oxiger. This is another work session item that you overviewed with Dean Abernathy and his team last month. And just as a quick reminder, this Early Childhood Education Entry Certificate is basically bundling two already existing courses into a certificate which will help the students obtain employment and provide our industry partners with the skillset and the certification that they are looking for. So it's really no additional cost to the institution and it provides additional value to our students and to our industry partners. So it's my recommendation to the board for this action item to approve this Early Childhood Education Entry Certificate.
Very good. Thank you very much. This was presented at a work session and appreciate you bringing it forth. Any questions or comments?
The only thing I can say, this is exciting because it gives high school graduates a job-ready certificate to pursue a career if it's not the end around, but it's work right out of high school, which is really what these students need. And it provides for a continuing education for them. Sure.
Thank you for Mark. Thank you Mark. I'm sorry, Mark, you broke up.
Oh, I'm just thanking his whole group that put that together.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Well, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I'd have to echo trustee Howt's comments. I think this is an indication of we are really, we at Ames are really pursuing educational opportunities that the market really wants and demands. As I understand it, these people can just almost, I think they're just darn near guaranteed employment according to what we heard last, at the last meeting. So just one more excellent idea that Ames is doing, so.
All right, well, thank you for that, Dr. Peterson. Anyone else? Have a motion?
I would make a motion to approve item
6F.
6F, yes.
And I would like to second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve item 6F as proposed. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Carrie, would you take a roll call vote please?
Trustee Howt.
Aye.
Trustee O'Hara.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Windell.
Aye.
Chair Oxiger.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Moving on, item number 6G. Policy 3-100, Capital Reserve and General Operating Funds Revision. Mr. Jensen, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have before you item 6G. This is a revision to policy 3-100, the Capital Reserve and General Operating Funds. The changes made to the policy are very, very minor, all administrative in nature in the title and then reflecting the appropriate name for the college as a local district college versus a junior college district. So, Mr. Chairman, administrative recommendation is to pass, to approve policy 3-100, Capital Reserve and General Operating Funds as presented.
Thank you sir. Any questions of Mr. Jensen? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I would say that we accept. She moved it. This, this, this.
6G.
Thanks.
Okay.
I would second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We have a motion and a second to approve item 6G. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Carrie, would you take the vote please?
Yes. Trustee Howt.
Aye.
Trustee O'Hara.
Aye.
Trustee Peterson.
Aye.
Trustee Windell.
Aye.
Chair Oxiger.
Aye.
So motion carries. Thank you very much. And that's the end of the action items.
Mr. Chairman.
Moving on to information items. Just a reminder of the June 17th and 18th, 2020 Board Retreat. Well, it'll be for two days. A reminder, we'll have a, Dr. Bornstein, you might remind me, or Carrie. I think the first day is going to be a half a day and will involve a formal evaluation of the CEO, am I correct?
Actually, the 17th will be a half a day and that will be the Administrative Board Retreat where the Cabinet will present its year-end report on strategic plan initiatives for year two.
That's correct.
And then the 18th is a full-day board retreat that's truly board, only board, obviously with Carrie and I facilitated. And this year, it is the year for the more formal board evaluation. So Carrie has some information from ACCT on that, that she can offer you as well, because that will be coming out ahead of time. And then those results will be presented at your board retreat on the 18th. And then there's an informal board evaluation of the CEO.
That's right.
After we do the formal one. So I guess Carrie, if you have any additional information you want to share?
Additional information, I will see the formal board assessment tool. We will be in contact with the trustees.
Okay, very good. There were no other items presented for the agenda by the 18th as requested. So that will kind of be the agenda. Heidi, did you have a question or comment?
I, I do have a question. Where, I don't have it in front of me. Where will the retreat be? Where will it be at? Location?
So I can jump in since I'm on right now. So the 17th, the half-day, we, at this point, we will be on the Greeley Campus in the board conference room, BD Hall 101. It's a lot, since we will be Cabinet and Board, that's a more comfortable space for everybody, plus the technology. At this point, what we're looking at is a hard start at nine o'clock and then ending around noon and then lunch with Cabinet and Board. And then on the 18th, Carrie is working with the Greeley Country Club to have a space for us there. That's, you know, all of this is pretty early. But that's what we're working on, excuse me. And certainly Carrie has confirmed in our contract with ACCT that if for some reason we're not at a place where we can be face-to-face, that we can either cancel or we could postpone to another date when we are, when we can be all together. Or we can do it virtually. So we have options within our ACCT contract to move forward however we need to.
Hey, very good. Did that answer your question?
It did, thank you.
Okay, you bet. Yeah, and again, as Dr. Bornstein alluded to, this, this could be very, very dynamic. There could be changes depending on the situation with the virus and what type of meeting we run and where we meet and all that. So stand by for further information as that date gets closer. We'll keep you updated. Any other questions about the board retreat or comments? Okay, correspondence, please see your board packet for any correspondence received. And the same for the board calendar of events. That board packet is published in Diligent and please refer to that. Carrie would be available for any questions and she would disperse those as necessary, if necessary. Item 8, President's Report. We're going to dispense with the verbal and visual President's Report, just in the interest of the virtual meeting. Again, all of this is in your packet. So if you have any questions, please review your packet and forward any questions to the appropriate people. Item 9, Comments from Board Members. Who wants to start Heidi?
I am here. I have my three, three, three o'clock just hit me. So I thought it was, it's a very good meeting. I'm really excited about the two certificates and the, well, the one certificate and the four-year program that we've approved. I think Chuck has done an amazing job on the budget. Like I said, I asked him questions and he was very professional and calm with me in helping me interpret some of the items. And then Dee has done a very amazing job and with the budget. And then also, I know it's easier said than done to negotiate better health insurance and so forth. And so hats off to Dee. So I appreciate everyone's work today, especially virtually.
All right, thank you Heidi. Next. Mark, go ahead.
Well, oh, good, Mark.
Okay. Well, this, this has been a different experience having a meeting in such, such a fashion. I've missed all your faces. I want to thank everybody for, you know, what they, what, what we're all doing and taking up the challenges that exist in front of us. And, and we know this is going to be a little different side of the planet. We're a different planet altogether for the next calendar year or so or more. Like our grandparents, many of our grandparents, they had one of these issues back in 1918. And now we know what they were up against, but we know a lot more than they did, which is, which is scarier to some extent. I appreciate everybody's patience with my queries on our action items. I, last month's meeting, I, I was concerned about it and, and to be honest with you, I owe everyone an apology. First of all, Carrie, she is our scribe. She is our note taker. She is someone whose confidence I never want to fail. And for some reason, I inferred that I didn't trust what was that, what was written. And I should have sought counsel on that, how to deliver that statement. And I do apologize, not only to Carrie, once again, to Dr. B, our board, the staff, the college. I'm sad that that happened. I'll try to, I'll try to do better. But it did happen. We'll move on from it. Other than that, thank you for what you're doing at, at this college, at your home life. It's certainly a challenge and a change. We get to, we could have these meetings in our pajamas. Nobody would know. But that's not the fun part of it all. It's about being next to you guys. And you guys did a great job for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Carrie, you popped up. Did you want to say something?
Yes, I wanted to say thank you to trustee Howt. No offense taken and apology accepted and we're all good. We'll move on.
Thank you Carrie. Dr. Peterson, I think you were trying to get in there.
Well, yeah, but, you know, I can wait. So, but as long as I've got the floor, I'll just go ahead and, and say, you know, I really appreciate my, Mark's comments. And I just want to say that it's, you know, I was a little, tell you, just sort of nervous about this meeting today, thinking that, gosh, are we going to really be able to? gosh, are we going to really be able to accomplish anything? And, and is my computer going to bail out or something right in the middle of it? And, you know, it was such an unknown territory that I just really did, was somewhat nervous about it. So I just think it's worked very well. And, you know, I just want to say, we got a damn good board, you know? And I appreciate Mark and, and Jean's willingness to come out and, and really talk about the issues that, that are, you know, sort of bugging and, and were able to take care of it. So as I've said many times, I'm really proud to be a member of this board, and, and I still am. So it was a good meeting, really was.
Thank you, Dr. Peterson. Trustee, who hasn't spoken, O'Hara.
Thank you. Well, I'll just add a quick comment on my appreciation for Carrie and the administrative team for coming up with a new technology that fits in our environment today that worked pretty darn slick. I've been on some other Zoom cloud meetings, and this worked better than any of my other experiences. But also, Lyle, I wanted to comment that on my list of duties as the board representative to the foundation board, I am supposed to be keeping the board of trustees abreast of some of the happenings at the foundation board, and it keeps getting dropped off the agenda. And I, I'm feeling a little delinquent. But is that an expectation of the board of trustees?
I certainly think that we'd like to hear from you. Do you have, do you have a report? You certainly will open to, to present something.
Okay.
I would be open to that.
Okay. Do you want me to give it now or wait?
Sure. Let's be flexible.
Yes, I'll be flexible and I'll be quick. In March, there were two board meetings. One on the 16th, or one on the 12th, that did not have a quorum. But I thought there was an important comment from Kelly Jackson about the foundation, and that is that the foundation revenue is up 33% from last year at that time, March 12th, which I thought was nice to hear, that they're, they're performing well. And now I'll jump to the March 26th meeting. And I think it's important that you hear the results of the topic that consumed most of the meeting, and that was a report back from the consultant that has been retained for the the feasibility, the feasibility study on a major funding campaign. And I think many of you participated in the feasibility analysis, the one-on-one interviews. And so the report is back. It was given to some of the senior cabinet members and to the foundation board. And I'm going to tell you about some of the the comments and the recommendations from the, the study consultant. And first of all, their findings were that 90, it was a 96% favorable impression of Ames and the faculty. Second comment, an 88% favorable from the college or for the College Promise Scholarship Initiative. 90% favorable on the major gifts campaign. And another comment, an 80% of the interviewees demonstrated a willingness to participate in the campaign on a committee or as a volunteer ambassador or financially. So I thought those were pretty positive numbers coming back. There were also some other recommendations or findings, I should say, from the one-on-one interviews. And the interviews, again, included a number of people from the community, business leaders, in addition to faculty and administration and board members. First recommendation, and that was that all of us, Dr. B, cabinet members, board of trustees, foundation board, and Kelly Jackson, all need to be more present in the community. I think we're, we're aware of that, but that was pretty clear, that we need to continue to push ourselves to be more visible in the community. Number two, the foundation needs to showcase their events more broadly, since many interviewees were not sure they'd ever attended a foundation event. So some confusion there. Third, thirdly was messaging and definition of the College Promise Program require expanded explanation to ensure it aligns with community needs and is all-inclusive, especially for underrepresented and non-traditional students. Fourth recommendation, the transportation, or fourth comment, the transportation initiative was not well-received with the interviewees. Respondents recommended the college collaborate with already in-place options before launching an independent service. Fifth, respondents questioned the entrepreneurship initiative, asking if it was a duplication of other community programs. Also, the College for Kids Early Learning Program was not well-received. It was recommended the college heavily collaborate with the school districts in the initiative. And then this last recommendation, I think, is the key recommendation. The consultant recommends moving forward with a goal of 30 million for the major gifts campaign, rather than what had been established initially was 36 million. So the foundation actions were to request that Kelly Jackson go out and collect consultant proposals. There is a strong feeling that we needed to have a consultant available to help us with the campaign. And secondly, the quantifiable time requirements for the college leadership, yes, that relates to being more visible in the community. Third, move to the planning phase of the campaign with the understanding that if the college is not 100% supportive of the campaign, the, the foundation will halt moving forward. And then last, interview and select a consultant based on the college's support. So requesting that it be clearly explained, if the college feels that this is the right timing, based on what's happening at the college versus what's happening in the environment. And we all know that the environment's a little bit different today than it was a couple of months ago. But anyway, I wanted you to be aware of the feasibility study report came back. Those are some of the recommendations. And if you have any interest in looking at it in more detail, please let Kelly Jackson know, or Dr. B. So any questions or comments?
Jean? Did, I mean, we have a retreat, we don't have a retreat, but we have a board meeting with the foundation in September. But would it be prudent for us to have something sooner than that as far as a meeting with their board? And, you know, obviously, the times have changed since they've done this survey. In the next calendar year, it's going to be a bigger challenge for, for many of us and businesses alike. But should we, should we meet with the foundation to give them a shoulder of reinforcement? Would that be prudent for us? Or what, or at least a letter from maybe the board?
Oh, it has, has come up in several of our discussions and issues today. This is a dynamic environment that is changing rapidly. And some, some of the feelings might be different under the recent financial issues resulting from the COVID-19 virus, and also the pressure on the oil and gas industry. But I would leave it up to Dr. B and Kelly to figure out if we want to have a joint board discussion sooner than, than September. But it is going to be important that the foundation board feels comfortable with the level of support from the college to move forward with this major campaign.
And I would agree with that. I think that Dr. B and Kelly should probably have this discussion for the, were both at the meetings, and they've had input on this, and then make a recommendation to the board as to how we proceed with discussing this. Heidi, you popped up. Do you have a comment?
I did. I'm, well, first off, I'm anxious to get back into the community and try to be present more after the COVID-19 kind of filters away. And I did discuss the major campaigns with Kelly Jackson, and it looks amazing. I had no idea. And I would like to find out more information about it and how I could be of help and what I could do. So more information, the better, Jean. So I agree with you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Chair Oxegor, I have a little bit more information if you're interested in, at it this time.
Absolutely.
Okay. So the executive committee of the foundation did meet in the interim between the results of the report that trustee O'Hara just presented. Actually, they met a couple of times, and as of very recently, within the last couple of days, decided a couple of things with regard to that. One is that this is not the time for our community to, for Ames and Ames Foundation to be going out for a capital campaign right now. They're going to monitor that. They're going to continue to monitor that to determine whether that's six months from now or a year from now. But with everything else going on and the very basic means that are out in our communities now, we're, we're going to put that on hold for a little bit. And then two other critical points. One is apparently there was some either incorrect data and/or missing data from that report. So they're waiting to clear that up. And then in moving forward, they will be going out for an RFP for someone to help continue the process. So that's where the executive team is now on that. With that, I don't think there's a need to change our joint meeting anytime sooner. I think September would be fine. Obviously, we'll talk to Timothy and Kelly about that. But given what we just learned from the executive committee of the foundation, we're, we're on hold. So I just wanted to update you on that.
Okay, thank you, Dr. B. I appreciate that. And I think that's the way we should proceed with making any decisions, recommendations, meetings, anything. I think we should defer that to you and to Kelly to set up in just for these reasons, because there's always last-minute information. And personally, I think it's, I would certainly agree with that decision, that this would be a bad time for a campaign when businesses are struggling to keep open. And so I appreciate those comments. Anything else on that topic? And Jean, thank you for that report, and thank you for bringing that up. We will take caution to see that that appears on the agenda in the future.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, I want to say a couple of things. Mark, I think you would probably, maybe you remember this comment, but I think it was at the last meeting when you said that you would probably never see the day when we dispensed with the pledge of allegiance as long as I was a chair. You know, today you saw it. But that doesn't, well, what I'd like to say on the note is what this college has done, with Dr. B, her, her cabinet, her staff, all the administration people have done over the last couple of three weeks has just been absolutely phenomenal. And it's in that American spirit of entrepreneurialship and innovation and creativity and everything that they have worked. They've transformed this campus from having classes on campus to making it a virtual campus in what normally would probably take maybe a year, maybe two years. I don't know. But certainly, they've performed miracles. And they did it only through hard work and dedication and commitment to this college and to our students. And I just want to say how phenomenal I think that is and how much we appreciate it. So please extend that. I know there's some 54 of you out there listening. I want you to all accept a sincere thank you, sincere vote of gratitude from all of us here. So as far as the meeting, I think it went very, very well. We've got a couple of kinks to work out, but other than that, I think for the first time, we did a great job of it. I don't know whether we're going to be doing this again, but it is a high likelihood we'll be doing our next meeting like this. So maybe it'll run a little tiny bit smoother. But again, a great job by everybody, by Carrie. What a phenomenal job, Carrie. Thank you very, very much. I know you worked hours and hours and hours on setting this up, and all the people that helped Carrie. Thank you very much. So with that, I will echo everybody else's comments about the meeting. And I'll ask on item 10, do we have any comments from the board on any of those items? What did we learn? What worked? What didn't? Et cetera. Any comments?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd jump in there and say, I don't know as I have any comments particularly on the, the meeting, which is the first, first stab at it, and I think it went pretty well. I got to tell you that Carrie spent, I think, just about all day Monday trying to get me hooked up. And we never could get it done. So, you know, thanks again to her. But I would also add a comment, Lyle, I know that having been in your chair, your duties and responsibilities and work increased as well. And I think you've been a part of, of this team that is tackling the coronavirus. And I think we all, I thank you for that and say a good job done.
Well, thank you for that, Ray. Anyone else? Go on once.
Chair Oxegor?
Go ahead, Heidi.
Hi, I just want to say thank you, everyone, for, for joining the meeting. I think there's like 65 people, and I know everyone would like to get back to normalcy. But I truly appreciate what they've done so far. I mean, like you said, Chairman, there's just, I mean, they've done an amazing feat to get everything online, virtual lessons going on, et cetera. I mean, they've done an amazing feat to get everything online, virtual lessons going on, et cetera. And I appreciate everyone's patience and continued work in this, in this time that's so unprecedented that we never thought would occur. So thank you, everyone. And you too, Carrie.
Carrie, did you have something to say?
I do have a comment. Thank you, Chair Oxiger. I would be amiss if I didn't say thank you to, to people who trained me on Zoom. And that would be Megan Self and Brandon Poppins. Brandon as well spent a lot of time helping each of you. Training. So I just wanted to share my things with them as well as all women.
Thank you, Carrie. Well, everybody be safe out there. Love each other from a distance. Please be safe. This, this will pass and we'll all get together soon. And be safe. With that, the meeting is adjourned.